Welcome to the Titusville City Council Meeting of April 10, 2018 at 6:30 PM. We have a quorum. I will call this meeting to order. We have with us the -- we're fortunate to have a pastor garrison of faith pastors church to give our invocation, sir, if you will.
Once again, really appreciate the opportunity. Anytime we get a chance to open this council meeting in prayer, speak for our church, I don't say it lightly, these aren't just words, but on behalf of our church, thank you for the privilege of opening this meeting.
Thank you, sir.
So, let's pray. Heavenly Father, we do thank you for the privilege that you give us to meet together as citizens of this community. We thank you for the work that has been done. We thank you for the work that will be done. And then, Father, we thank you for the work that's being done tonight. Father, we pray for each of these council members. We pray for each person who's sitting on this council, on this board, and frankly, for all the people who are doing work behind the scenes to make sure that this meeting takes place tonight. Father, we thank you for the work that they do. We thank you for the commitment that they have to our community, to our city. Father, we thank you for the desire for excellence that they have, having sat in a couple of these meetings over the course of the last year and a half, just excited about the fact that they desire excellence in our community. Father, we pray tonight for wisdom, decisions that have to be made, someone's got to make them, and they don't make themselves. And so, these people have been given the mantle of responsibility to make those choices and to make those decisions, and I pray, Father, that you would give them wisdom even beyond what they possess as they wrestle with some of these issues and deal with some of the things that affect not only themselves, but affect our entire community and the health and welfare and the future of our community. Father, we pray for our police and our emergency services, our fire department and our other emergency services, and we thank you for the work that they do. We thank you for the sacrifices that they make on a daily basis to protect us, to serve, Father, to be a part of making our lives enjoyable, of making our lives safe. We enjoy this part of Florida, and we enjoy living in Titusville, and we like it for a variety of reasons, and we thank you for those who keep it that way, and we thank you for those who keep it safe. Father, we know that there are a number of issues plaguing our community, plaguing our society tonight, and, Father, we just pray through the power of the name of Jesus, we pray in the name of, in the blood of Jesus, we pray, Father, for your healing hand to be upon our community, to be upon our city, to be upon our people, and, Father, we just commit this meeting to you. Pray that cool heads would prevail, Father. We know that every decision that's made tonight may not excite everyone in the room, may not excite everyone in our city, but, Father, I pray that we would trust the leadership that's in front of us, and pray, Father, that we would support them, and, Father, I pray that we would continue to pray for them, for wisdom on a daily basis. Father, we ask all these things in the name of your Son, Jesus Christ.
Amen. Thank you, Pastor. Please join me in the pledge of the flag.
I pledge allegiance to the flag of the United States of America and to the republic which stands, one nation, under God, indivisible, with liberty and justice for all.
Next item is the minutes. We need approval of the minutes of February 27, 2018.
I move to approve them as the city council.
Mayor, you do have a card on this item?
Sorry?
You have a card on this item?
As you know, we have reviewed state law, and since we have no policy for anyone coming up, and it has been very infrequently that anyone does, but there is one person who has opted to come up on everything all the time, so since we don't have to do that unless council wants to change that, we're no longer accepting any cards on the minutes. The minutes are the minutes, and they really are only supposed to be changed by the people if somebody up here wants to change it, something they said. So, with that, I'll accept the motion.
Okay. On February 27, 2018.
Okay. Do I have a second?
Second.
The motion is second. Everyone in favor, say yes.
Yes.
All opposed, like sign passes unanimously. There are no special recognitions and presentations. Boards and commissions, Titusville Environmental Commission has a presentation.
Yes, sir. During the December 12, 2017 city council meeting, council directed the members of the TEC to complete research relating to solar energy and public facilities and present their concrete data, including what solar energy would cost, what it would save, whether it's feasible, and any related information from other municipalities pursuing solar energy. The item was discussed by the Titusville Environmental Commission during the regular meeting in January, February, March, attached as their final report and recommendation during the 14 March 2018 regular TEC meeting. The TEC voted unanimously in favor of sending the recommendations to the council and voted unanimously in favor of inviting several subject matter experts to answer council's questions relating to the subject. Council's action is to accept the report as written and provide any desired direction to staff and the Titusville Environmental Commission. And we have Mr. Mijak, believers, doing the presentation.
Good evening, Mr. Mijak. How are you, sir?
Mr. Mayor, council, I'm doing fine. Thank you.
Thank you.
Yeah, I guess I'm the stucky from the TEC to answer the question. Essentially, in the summary, as Mr. Larisse just put it out, what will it cost? So, I'm going to start out and give you just the short answers first, and then I'm going to let Dr. James Fenton, who's the director of the Florida Solar Energy Center, give a brief presentation, and then I'll come back up and we can go through the specifics of the TEC report as you guys decide, questions and answers, and we'll just try to make it as short as possible. But what will it cost? It'll cost nothing. It's an investment. It's buying down on future costs. You're going to be paying the electricity in this building as long as this building stands and we continue to use it. So, if it's here for the next 25 years, which was our assumption, the electricity's going to cost over 1.25 million. That's in 25 years. The net answer is if we buy down on that, we can save approximately a third, and if we use it judiciously, and by that I mean also applying solar power to our vehicles as well as to the buildings, we can save upwards of two-thirds of our electrical costs. And not just on this building, but across the city and all of our power bills, whatever they may be, because we really don't know. So, it can save a considerable amount. Whether it's feasible, I would argue that that's an invalid question. Of course, it's feasible. They've been doing it for years. Is it reasonable and is it cost-effective? And that's a far better question, and I believe Dr. Fenton can clearly answer that for you. In my opinion, it's yes, unequivocal. So, with that, I'd like to introduce Dr. James Fenton, and we'll see what he can teach you very quickly about Florida and solar power.
Thank you.
Hey, thank you, sir.
I use this one, I guess, huh?
No, this one.
Oh, all right. Thank you, and thank you for having me here, and I will try to be as brief as well. I've been called the solar evangelist, okay, in lots of ways, and of course, my tie hopefully puts a smile on your face. More importantly, I'm going to show you that this investment we're talking about is going to put a bigger smile on your face. All right? So, let's go on to the right poke. Right. Even this somewhere?
I don't know why two are up there.
Ah, okay. Ah, there we go. Thank you. All right. Alternative energy is always an alternative until it's cheaper. So, if you look at this diagram here, this has got both residential costs, commercial costs, and utility costs. The residential ones are, in the year 2010, are listed there in red over to your left. The axis is the actual cost of electricity that this purchase would produce, equivalent, say, to comparing out of the wall. Okay, so you can see in 2010, the cost without any income tax rate, it was 42 cents, and in 2010, you were probably paying nine cents out of the wall. So, nobody in their right mind would put solar on the roof. Okay? You notice how we dropped down in 2016 on that left curve, down to 18 cents? And then, in 2020, we're supposed to be down to nine, and then we're supposed to be down to five in the year 2030. Okay? And likewise, that same thing happens with commercial, which would be your municipal buildings at the same time. Because of economies of scale, those are a little bit cheaper, but they moved down substantially as well as the utility scale, the prices moved down. Now, we have these nice co-ops that have been running around the state of Florida. We have a lot of local industry that, without the co-ops or with the co-ops, are actually putting photovoltaics on our roof. Bill over here, wherever he is, has got PV on the house right across the way. I have 5 kilowatts of PV on my roof. Okay? I got it installed at $2 a watt last year. Without any subsidies, I'm paying 5.5 cents off my roof with my income tax credit. Okay, well, okay. Okay, wait a minute, I went too far, sorry. With my income tax credit, that's the thing up in the upper left there, I'm actually paying 4.4 cents out of the wall. I remind you, I pay 12 to my utility. Okay? So, I'm paying one-third the cost for electricity. I am not in the business of making power, nor are you the city. You are in the business of lowering your electric bill, and offsetting that with solar saves you money. Okay? You can see the sort of rates up here for commercial installations in Florida. As you get bigger in size, their prices get lower and lower. So, right now, all the solar installations from a commercial perspective, offsetting the energy cost that commercial buildings for today, it's the cheapest thing to do. You'll notice if you look way over there at the utility solar, that's utility solar there with four hours of lithium-ion battery. It is cheaper than the natural gas plants that they built today. It's the cheapest power supply around, and with four hours of battery, it even offsets it and moves it to the peak to offset their demand. So, the utilities are printing money and selling solar energy. You can print money, too, okay, if you choose to do this yourself. Now, once again, this is just quick here. So, back when we came up with the 2020 plan, the goal was to get it down to six cents a kilowatt hour without subsidy at the utility scale. In 2010, we were way up there at 27 cents. You can see where coal is, you can see where nuclear is, you can see where natural gas is. In 2016, coal was uneconomic. It disappeared. Not regulations, it cost too much. Okay? Nuclear disappeared, cost too much. Right? Natural gas, okay, is still cheaper. With the income tax credit in 2017, it's cheaper for them to install solar than it is for them to install a natural gas plant. So, they are. FPL will be at about 4% solar by the year 2023, having been at zero just a few years ago. That's a huge increase in their solar. The gazelle does not have to outrun the cheetah, it has to outrun the slowest gazelle. Put a cheetah on your roof, that's how you make money. We have these co-ops, I'll just give you some price examples here with the co-ops. The advantage of the co-ops, and we've had a couple in Brevard County already, that's the one that I installed my solar with, and that's citizens coming together, signing up, saying they're very interested, working together, 100 of them do that, they pick a vendor out of that who then sells them that solar at sort of a Chinese menu price. Okay? And we're getting that cost down substantial. So, let me give you an example of what I effectively put on my roof. These are the listing of the co-ops and so forth, but if you look up there, I went ahead and put a 5-kilowatt system. My install cost was $2 a watt, so it cost me $10,000 upfront. I then had the right to not ship $3,000 of my money to the federal government because I got an income tax credit. I kept that money here in Florida and spent it to my local citizens around here rather than shipping money to Washington. So, my actual upfront cost was $7,000. Okay? If you look down in there, the simple payback in years was 8.5. The net present value was about twice what I spent, okay, over the 25-year lifetime and so on and so forth. We move all that savings that you make, you move it all back up today and what the equivalent value of it is. So, I go ahead and put $7,000 in, and effectively, I end up with $15,000. Okay? So, the whole issue with solar is how you do the financing. Okay, if you do this with a 4-year percent mortgage and so on and so forth. Okay? Payback is on the order of 8.5 years. So, you have a 15-year mortgage, and you finance it on it, you'd make money the first month. That's what it means. Okay? Even if you had a 10-year mortgage, you'd make money in the first month. The rate of return is 14%, and that is fixed for the next 25 years, twice as good as the stock market, and it doesn't change, and you kept all your money local. Get a little bit more complicated when we get into larger-sized buildings. A residential building, your cost of electricity is the cost roughly, on average, here in the state of Florida, in FPL territory, it's a little cheaper, you might be paying about 11 cents a kilowatt hour, and no matter when you use that kilowatt hour, that's what they charge you. In a commercial installation, such as the buildings that we have here in the city, the cost might be on the order of around eight cents for energy and then $10 for peak demand. So, there are two charges that you get. Your energy cost is actually lower, so that's good, but if you have some spiky use, as I've got an example here, this is an example where I used a hotel, so the actual black line is the actual kilowatts that it uses. It's kind of like, kilowatts is like horsepower. Okay? There's a big difference between whether you floor your V8 or you don't floor your V8. You know that changes miles per gallon, but it also means how much power you're actually getting out. So, kilowatts is power. Okay? So, if you look at that hotel, you notice that that black line load is what it looked like. You'll notice that that arrow is pointing at the highest point, and that highest point, like I say, isn't good enough. 200, 300 kilowatts in that one example. So, I would take that 300-kilowatts height, I'd multiply it by $10.40, and so you'd be paying $3,000 for that one month just for that peak. The area under the curb is what you pay on the cents per kilowatt hour. You notice in this particular case, when I added solar to the hotel, it created that new blue line, but it didn't lower that peak. Where over at the school example, I put the solar up, because solar shines in the middle of the day, the biggest load is in the middle of the day, you can see where it lowers the demand. So, the interesting issue is for me to accurately calculate exactly what you would pay on your municipal buildings, I need to know your exact consumption profile for a whole year on minute data. But let me give you the worst-case scenario. Okay? If I don't know your load profile, I don't know that I'm going to save demand. Okay? It's a complicated table. I apologize about all this. It follows in the same vein as that previous table. So, in this particular case, I've changed the sizes around. My understanding is you were looking at a 200-kilowatt installation on the roof. So, if we want to focus on the third column way over to the right, as you get bigger, the cost installation, it'd be a buck eighty a watt. Okay? That would be a $360,000 purchase. Now, if you choose to do it with some of your vendors out here, it's possible that they can take the income tax credit. You obviously don't pay taxes as a city, okay, but there is a way to still get that cost associated, benefit associated with that. You'll notice there that the prices that you're actually paying for energy, probably around here in FPL territory, is about 5.8 cents. Remember, I, the homeowner, paid 12. Okay? But I don't pay any demand. Okay? So, all my electricity at 4.4 cents with the income tax credit offsets 12 cents. In your case here, your 4.25 electricity is offsetting 5.8. So, you still win, okay? You just don't win as much, and I can't tell you without knowing your load data exactly how much you lowered your demand charges, you will win more than what I'm telling you. So, right now, in this example here, at 200, at worst, you're going to get a 5.5% rate of return on your investment, and at worst, the payback is 16 years. Now, I hope, as good stewards of your city, your buildings are going to last a lot longer than the amount of time that my PV panels might even last. 25-year warranty guaranteed. Okay? They'll even guarantee that you don't have roof penetrations and leak problems, too. So, clearly, but for me to accurately tell you exactly how much your rate of return is, I need to know your minute-by-minute data of your ability built, and FPL won't give you that. They'll give you 15-minute data for one month. Okay? So, the bottom line is you have to measure it and verify. So, if you choose to go forward, and I would encourage you to do that, you've got to go in and measure your data, so you can then come back next year after you've done that first initial installation, and you will know exactly how much money you make in every other installation going forward. So, you be wise about it, because you're still making an investment. I'll quickly wrap up here. As we're moving to more electricity as far as our transportation, okay, it's also possible that your solar that you added into your fleets in here will actually be used to power your fleets. You'll be electrifying your fleets, and believe it or not, we're coming out with pickup trucks. Give us a couple of years, and we'll get you an electric pickup truck. It's happening right now. City of Orlando is already experimentally using those along with their solar. But the beauty about driving on electricity is it's cheaper than gasoline and so on and so forth, jobs and everything stayed in Florida. I could easily do the math here for you. Let me try to do this. It's complicated, there's lots of numbers. The average car on the road today gets 25 miles per gallon. If we assume you pay $2 a gallon for gasoline, okay, I divide those two numbers, and it means that you pay eight cents of gasoline to drive a mile. Okay? That's what that means. Okay? And you can see the different values for cost per mile. The electricity, if you were to get it out of the wall as a residential customer, you get, instead of 25 miles per gallon, you get 3.7 miles per kilowatt hour. You take the kilowatt price, and I can go ahead and show you that I pay 3.4 cents for electricity out of the wall, less than half the eight cents. So, at $2 a gallon, I'm actually paying the equivalent of 84 cents a gallon. I put that solar on my roof, and I'm paying 27 cents a gallon. Gasoline is not too cheap. It's eight times too expensive, and you import it from somewhere else. So, yes, you should put solar on your roof, because you're going to make money on it, offsetting your electricity costs. You need to move as fast as you can to solar, providing the transportation fuel, because you keep all that money local here, and you make the profits. All right? So, we'll end up. Key takeaways. Residential solar is cheap. Comparing four cents versus 12 is an outstanding deal. Comparing four cents versus six cents, it's good, but it's not spectacular, and I can't really tell you how much money you save off the demand. It's still economically in your best interest to do it. PV makes EV gasoline equivalent to 27 cents a gallon. In either of these scenarios, there is no business model really for you going out and purchasing batteries right now for your home. Okay? Because right now, what do you do? You go ahead and put PV on your roof, you make your house energy efficient, you go buy an electric car, you make money on those all the time. Batteries for your house or for the city buildings right now is an insurance policy that you hope you don't need. I would recommend that you go ahead and use a diesel backup generator, a gasoline generator. It's possible. Until we get to the point where you have enough electric cars around here, now you have electric cars as your backup generator. So, that will be the future, that you'll actually use your vehicles to provide the resiliency associated with your buildings. But we're not there yet. Business models, it's possible with demand reductions, use the batteries to shave off that peak demand. Okay? These can be cost-effective. They're not there yet today, three or four years, I think they will be. So, whatever you do, you want to plan to allow those things to happen. The electrification's your vehicles, the battery's being added later, put some solar out there to brag about the fact that you got it on the roof, but do it wisely. Okay? You'll make money next year, too, if you wait a little bit. Okay. This is a Thomas Edison quote. He actually made this quote here in the state of Florida. "We are like tenant farmers chopping down the fence around our house for fuel when we should be using nature's inexhaustible sources of energy. I'd put my money on the sun and solar energy. What a source of power. I hope we don't have to wait till oil and coal run out before we tackle that." He actually said that to Harvey Firestone and Henry Ford down in Fort Myers when they were looking around for, believe it or not, sugarcane for ethanol back in the 20s. This is what I'll end it with. Solar on your roof and EV in your garage is where you put your money. Better return in the stock market, the jobs stay in Florida. Thank you very much. You have time for questions, I guess?
Yes. Counsel, have any questions?
First, I want to say thank you. That was great. So, based on what you're saying, it almost sounds like we need to look first at solar-powered cars and then look at doing something with the building.
My feeling is that the automobiles that you need in your city fleets, we are not there yet with electrified vehicles.
Okay.
Okay? So, I think you want to be aware of those, you want to be moving into those, you want to always be checking, and I'm sure your fleet people are very knowledgeable about all that.
Okay.
Okay? Do the policemen want to be driving an electric motorcycle? You bet. Soon as they get on one, they're sold. Okay? They get up and go, and it's quiet, too. So...
You could sneak up on people.
Yeah. So, I think the vehicles will occur as you move along.
Okay.
Okay? Clearly, doing anything efficiency-wise to your buildings, and I'm sure that you're already doing that.
Yeah.
Probably at a lot of degrees. We can argue whether you could even do more. Okay? Putting solar up, to be honest with you, put some solar up and brag, you've got solar on the roof, but measure it, and measure your yearly energy use at the same time you do that. So, then you do have the data. So, you make a small purchase, instead of maybe 200 kilowatts, put 10 up. Okay? Costs you 20,000 bucks. Measure it all for a year, so that the next year, you spend that money and you know how wisely you're spending it.
Sounds like a good idea.
Okay? And so, as a result, you can, you know, instead of it being at 16-year payback, if I spend it wisely, the next year, knowing all the data, it might be a 10-year payback.
Okay.
So, I think the way you want to do it. So, yes, solar is a good thing to do. Do it wisely.
And then wait on the cars a couple of years.
Well, I think you want to keep looking at cars, but...
Okay.
It depends on the vehicles you use in your fleet. Pickup trucks don't work yet.
Okay. Thank you.
As I'm asking this, I think I'm answering in my head. As I'm, as I'm asking this, I think I'm answering in my head. So thank you for the presentation. The capital expenditure...
Right.
On the front end...
It's upfront cost.
Right. For a building this size...
And the example I used there was three hundred and sixty thousand dollars.
Right. So it's factored in over the time...
Well, so it's the financing question is you're asking.
Right.
Okay? And so if your installer chooses to finance it to you at, at four percent, and does it as a lease, as an example...
Right.
Okay? There's leasing arrangements, there's financing arrangements. We do not allow third-party sales in the state of Florida, so they cannot sell you electricity, only utilities can. But they can lease that system to you. So they'll often even self-finance this for you.
Right.
So depending on that financing arrangement, just like you can buy a house with no money down, you can buy a house with ten percent, you've got to do the math. But all those options are available. So a lot of the reasonable-sized developers will actually pay that upfront cost for you, and they will manage the system and ensure that it works properly.
Okay.
Or you don't pay.
And that's, that, so, and that's where I default, right? So it's...
Right.
When I, if I go to FPL and they've got the big plan over there...
Right.
What I'm not buying is new lines to my house. Right? What, what, I'm, I'm paying my rate, which is going to be a higher rate, but I'm not...
You, you still do need those wires, you just still need all those things.
Right.
I'm not advocating that you disconnect yourself from the utility.
Right.
We need the utility.
Right.
Okay?
All right, thank you.
This is about lowering your bills.
Yes. Thank you.
Anyone else? I'll make a couple of comments. One of the problems we have with doing this building is this building during big storms and so forth, or storms, if you notice on the walls, all the paint coming off the sides and coming down and so forth. We have it somewhere, we don't have a definite date at this point, but within a relatively short period of time, we hope to be able to...
Fix the roof.
...be, be replaced. So putting in another chunk of money for what may be, I don't know, maybe five years, maybe ten years, maybe fifteen years, I don't know. But obviously, we're going to have to do something.
My answer to your question on that is, buy the new roof now, put the solar in, and the solar will pay for the cost of your roof over the next twenty years.
If we only had the money, that's the second part.
Well, but that's, that's what I say, this is all based on a financing arrangement.
Well, Mayor, I think the other thing, that this is a fifty-year-old building, we have a capital investment plan to have a new city hall, if we can ever get around to funding it.
Right.
Well, and that, that, you may want to do something like a ten-kilowatt, just a small one to see how it works.
Okay.
Okay? And get comfortable with that. There are other buildings you may choose to do instead, then? Yeah.
I see. But I also want to, want to tell you that, that we have, at this point, A, we, we, our budgets really are stretched at this point to, to, to almost breaking, frankly. We also are under all kinds of state regulations as a city, every city is now...
Sure, sure.
...for the, for the lagoon, that's the removing, what is it, TMDLs, and don't ask me what that means.
I live on that lagoon, and I unfortunately have a septic tank, yes.
You do?
I'm aware of that, yes.
Get rid of that.
It would be nice if the state of Florida would let me get rid of it.
Oh, see? Tell me it'd be nice.
Okay? I'd be, I'd pay money if they gave me a sewer. We don't have a sewer.
Oh, you don't have a sewer?
Yeah.
I'm sorry.
That's a problem.
But we're putting in baffle boxes and all, all kinds of things that are necessary, and, and it's having an effect. We're actually somewhat ahead of the, the schedule they gave us, which I...
Well, so, I, I think the answer to your question, I, I, I...
I'm just saying, there are priorities.
The bottom line is that you need to put a bid out to have somebody to pay for the solar on your roof, and you're doing it through a leasing arrangement. Okay? And you need the proof that the money you pay per year is less than what you would have paid for the electricity. And you can, you can get those deals.
Including the cost of...
Oh, yeah, yeah.
And remember, as you pointed out, we don't have the advantage of a tax rebate.
Yeah, I know, but the, the person that you would lease it from would.
Okay.
They'd take the tax appetite. That's how the deal works. So the argument you're asking me is all about financing.
Yeah, I'm just saying, it's, it's...
And as you can imagine, there's all kinds of vehicles.
Yeah.
And, and you, you need to explore that, not from me, but from actual contractors.
I'm sure we will do that, but I'm just telling you that it's, it's a rough proposition for us, right?
Yeah, well, I'll, I'll help.
Four hundred thousand.
I'll help you look at that if you want. These gentlemen are smart, they'll ask me for advice.
Well, I appreciate that. Does anyone else have anything?
And from what you're saying to me, I'm, I'm assuming that if something were to happen, that we were to tear down this building, we could remove those and put them back on the new building.
Yes, there's a cost associated with that, but they'll even tell you that.
Yeah.
Okay? And if you're tearing this building down ten or fifteen years, you probably donate them to some homeless shelter or something around here, and put new ones on the other building anyhow. But, and right now, by the way, people are building upfront zero-energy homes today, and those are cost-effective when you buy brand-new ones. So if you are going to design a brand-new building, I encourage you to at least make it solar-ready or something like that, and get into those activities.
I'm sure we will.
Okay?
Take that. Okay, there's no other questions? We need...
Mayor, we have, uh...
Sorry, wait one second.
We have cards as well.
Okay. Vice Mayor.
I'll wait till I have the card, if that's...
Okay, sure. Will you call a card, please, or cards?
Bill Young.
I was talking to the TEC committee, I was, you know, one of their technical advisors.
Sorry, we...
Oh, my name is Bill Young.
An address for, for record, please.
Okay. Bill Young, my house is next door.
Oh. I spoke to your wife the other day.
Huh?
The one right next door?
Yeah. Well, next to, to that, the little one.
Mm-hmm.
Okay? So that's the little one. Okay? And you see solar on my roof. You don't see my electric car, but my electric car is there, so I plug my car into my house. And so the solar was put in in, in two thousand and four, but the copper roof house across the street?
Mm-hmm.
Everybody knows the copper house roof across the street. I have a picture of it having solar in nineteen twenty, nineteen oh five, nineteen twenty. So they made solar in Florida in, in eighteen ninety. Over a hundred years ago, they made solar in Florida, and you have a house across the street that had solar, put it in in the early nineteen hundreds, over a hundred years ago. There could have been solar on my house, but I can't find a picture. So I did it myself when I moved into that house in two thousand and four. So I've lived in Titusville since nineteen fifty-seven, I've lived here, when this used to be Bayview High School. I went to school here. So I do solar, and I educate people, and I have a workshop coming up, May twenty-fourth. If anybody wants to come, I have a brochure, and you can come and learn about it. And my organization, I'm part of a nonprofit, Florida New Energy Association. So the building department with the code people here, they know me very well because I've done a dozen things to my house that I have to come here and deal with them. So they told somebody here, Mike, to go talk to Bill, because they know me, because I've been here a lot of times. So I guess, you know, I've been doing this for thirty years, so it's, makes economic sense to me. So that, so it's a matter of how you want to find out, so.
Thank you, sir. Next card, please.
Last card is Stan Johnston.
Stan Johnston, Eight Sixty Point Set Avenue. I'm here thinking, I believe that we do have the money. And I'm looking at some things where we have money, and that is that, for example, item eight A is spending forty-three thousand and four hundred dollars, we have read it, for seven laptop computers. That's a lot of money. Item eight B is spending over a hundred and thirty-nine thousand for one vehicle. One vehicle for, for, it's called purchase of two thousand and eighteen squad emergency response vehicle. That's a lot of money, that's a lot less than twenty thousand dollars. We are right, we already have been planning, even over a year ago, six million dollars to be spent on a parking garage, six million dollars. So I think we can spare twenty thousand dollars for some kind of a pilot program. We, we just, I think it was just, what is it, the last two months, we approved, I think, about a hundred thousand dollars, something like that, parking study for a facility. We don't even know what facility we're going to do for the parking, but we're planning the parking, which I don't understand that. So, so anyhow, I believe we don't have a little bit of money for, that we can do it. We have a lot of money, although, although just recently, we spent time speaking about the city going bankrupt. So I have fluctuations in my thinking about, do we have money or don't we have money? And I believe, indeed, we do have money. For example, is if you really wanted to do it, you can do it very easily with a, who's in, who is in the black? That is Water Resources. Water Resources has the money. They don't have any problem with getting the money. They went, recently, they did, what was it, thirty million dollars for the well field in, in, wherever it is. So we do have twenty thousand dollars, and, and that's what I'm, I'm here to share with you, is that we do have money. And, and even though we're going bankrupt, as somebody, some people say, is that six million dollars is a lot for a parking garage, and we've been planning for that for some time, maybe at least, expect, it's been two years now. So I'm saying to these fellows here, Mr. Majak and the other fellow, is that I believe we do have the money. Thank you.
Thank you. Everything we spend, of course, goes out for bids, and we get the best prices, and some things you just have to have to run a city, including a police department, so...
One of the things that surprised me the most was Dr. Fenton said we could replace all the police cars with Tesla S's. They're a hundred thousand dollars apiece. But it saves us money when you add in the cost of the gasoline and the maintenance on those vehicles. The Tesla S doesn't have a reciprocating engine, it doesn't have a transmission, it doesn't have brakes that wear out. It has the same suspension, so there's some maintenance. But when you factor in the drop in the maintenance cost and the drop in the reoccurring charges of using it, the Tesla S is a better option. So when you start thinking of it in terms that way, and then using it as a backup power source when we lose power because of a hurricane, so that the EOC can run longer, you know, it, it's almost a, a no-brainer kind of thing. It's really surprising. So you've seen our report. The one thing that I was most concerned about in this report was I could not get the city to give us the data on all the different buildings, the FPL data specifically. When I asked for that, I was given a list of twenty-three buildings, of which the city gave me seven, the FPL reports, for one year. We could have gone directly to Nancy Flickinger, who is the FPNL account manager for the city of Titusville, and she could give us all the data that we were talking about, at least in fifteen-minute increments, over the last two years, for every single city bill. But the city didn't give me, they gave me Marina bills, but they didn't give me the fire station bills, they didn't give me the police station bills, and there was a handful of others that we just don't have. So I can't answer your question specifically as to what it'll save. As Dr. Fenton showed you, a two hundred thousand dollar ray on this building, given the timeframe, would break even in twenty-five years. Well, actually, it would break even in sixteen years, but it would pay back and save us better than half a million dollars, if we stayed in this building, and if the roof was good, and other, other issues. One of the buildings that I did analyze was the Visitor's Center. Because the Visitor's Center's billing is less than twenty thousand a year, it doesn't have this demand charge associated with it. And so it could run almost at parity and have almost no electric bill by just putting a twenty-six hundred kilowatt solar ray on its roof. And if you were to extend that a little bit, we could put PV charging stations in the parking lot. Four of them would be almost four thousand dollars, but when you factor that in coming from the building, it's almost nothing. And yet it's a huge giveaway from the city. People just swipe a credit card, they pay their twelve cents for whatever it takes to charge their car, and it's done. So there's a huge benefit, we believe, of going solar, not to mention the carbon footprint drop, which is also a big one for us. So with that, I'd like to ask if you have any other questions regarding our report and where you think we want to go.
I'd just like to make a comment. I'm not sure about those Teslas being feasible and...
Ask the genius over here.
I just know that we'd, we'd have a very happy...
Yeah, I can afford a Tesla.
Yeah.
But a Lea works best.
So you're going to let me talk? All right. In a second, but we'll have a very happy police department.
You could also hire the Florida Solar Energy Center at a very reasonable rate to do the analysis on your buildings, and record that data, probably less than twenty-five K.
Okay.
So that's another option you guys should consider.
Thank, thank you. And I, and I appreciate that, and I appreciate the previous speaker. I, I'm going, I'm open to the idea of the introduction of solar as part of the development of infrastructure within the city. I think that we're going, I, I believe we're going to go there eventually. I think that's going to happen. I think other municipalities are starting. I, I don't, I don't know if, from planning, we're quite there yet, at least from policymaking, I don't, I don't think we're quite there, but maybe. But I think saying city hall puts such a big thing on it that I would be more apt to saying, let's remove some of the, the things that would just kill the idea, even if it's a good idea. So city hall, probably a bad idea right now. That is a heavy lift and probably beyond. On the other hand, we have a motor pool that I think that we're trying to get redone, and there's a lot of vehicles there. So from a, from a strategic standpoint, is that something that we could build an infrastructure to for the next thirty years in transition? That, to me, seems reasonable. I think the most reasonable idea is the one that you just said, at the Welcome Center, right? It's a light load, it's something that could be used as showcase, it's something that I think for the individuals who are coming to use our trails would dig. I think our, I think it would set a good model, and I think you put four pumps or put four pumps or charging stations out there, and all of a sudden, now you have a destination spot for some people when they don't have access to charging stations other places, which then gets them downtown, which then makes me go CRA is better for it. And now I go CRA money, I should pay for the solar panels, right?
[laughing]
Right? Like, that's, that, right. So all I'm saying is I think there's some logic or exploration there. I would be open to exploring the idea. I'm not fond of City Hall at this point. I don't think, I don't think that's going to fly. But figuring out where it may be feasible, at least from either now or in planning down the road, I would be open to talking about that.
Mayor Nelson?
I would just like to say, I would love to have a Tesla. That would be just.
Go get one.
I know. In all seriousness, Mike, I was approached several months ago by some people who were trying to start a sustainability board.
Yes.
And in discussing it with different people, I thought there's really no reason that the T E C can't take on that kind of a role. I don't know if we need to turn around and maybe change the ordinance, which creates you. And I would assume that we probably need to. But for me, there's, we've got climate change, whether or not people agree with it is there. And we have issues in the city, I think, of plastic bags, which drive me absolutely crazy.
Single-use plastic.
Oh, yeah. And there are things that we can do to help our community move forward. And so my original question when we came up with this proposal is, can the T E C do this kind of thing? And so I'm asking you, can you guys do it?
I think so.
Okay. Then my next question would be to Mr. Broom. Do we need to put in the language regarding, what is it? Have to find it. Basically, that the committee would assess and mitigate local risk due to changing climate and to make a transition to clean energy. Would we need to put in that kind of a language? Or do we need to say, this is the direction we want to go into?
I can look at the T E C code for you and let you know whether or not you would need to do that. Chances are, you would just need to give them that direction, and then they would act under the current code. But I can evaluate that and come back to you.
Okay. But I think that's, for me, I don't want to speak for everybody else, but I look at issues that are around the town, and I would like to see us a little more active. I'm not a science person. That's just not my background and training. But I know there are people out there that can do that. Dr. Fenton, to start with, is a great resource. And there are other things around town that I think we could do. I would just like to see you guys do that.
We would, too.
Yeah. So that would be my suggestion.
Thank you, sir. Thank you.
Well, when, do we need to do, I'm sorry, Walt?
Well, I think the preliminary thing we should do is allow staff sometimes to take a look at it before we go too far afield on it. I mean, we've got to know that there's a basis for it. And they're probably better capable of looking at the buildings and so forth. So, and I don't think, we don't need a motion for that. That can just be given to the city manager.
I was just wondering if we need to agree that going forward, that we are asking them to look at sustainability.
Well, I can do that. I mean, we can do it by consensus, or we can do a motion. But I don't think it's necessary. Everybody's head was going like this.
Is everybody?
Yeah.
Okay.
It's a consensus. We do need a motion to accept the Environmental Commission's report as given. I'll accept a motion on that.
Second.
Have a motion and second. Any further discussion? All those in favor, say yes.
Yes.
Any opposed by sign passes unanimously. The next is the Titusville Housing Authority, sir.
Yes, sir. Approve the Titusville Housing Authority semi-annual report as written.
I have a motion to approve the report as given. Are they, is anybody presenting tonight?
Sir, it says as written.
Yes, just as written.
So we've moved to approve the Titusville Housing Authority's semi-annual report.
Second.
I have a motion and a second. Any further discussion? You gotta let me get it out.
My apologies, sir.
Go ahead.
Yeah. I just, the Titusville Housing Authority plays a key role in our community, and they house around 3,000 people. I mean, there are 3,000 people that have a home right now because they exist. And although I'm appreciative of the report as presented, because of the role that they have, my hope would be that they would come in person moving forward. I think that, I think that we lose something because of that. And unfortunately, I think it shows opportunity in the relationship with the housing authority. So just for the future, that would be my hope, is that they would actually come. But thank you.
Yes. Well, we can ask them if they would do that. I'm not sure they want to do it all the time. But they're a little different. I'm not sure what the, what the actual founding documents say. But we certainly can ask them that. Mr. City Manager, will you ask Mr., what's his name, Bob?
Sir, they're required to provide a semi-annual annual report.
That's it?
That's it.
As part of their.
Yes, sir.
But we still could ask them if they would come.
Did.
You did?
Yes, sir.
And they didn't come.
Yes, sir.
Right.
Okay. Next item is the consent agenda.
Yes, sir. I'll read the consent agenda items for the record, and then we'll pull.
Mayor, next is petitions and requests.
Oh, I'm sorry.
Oh, I skipped it. I'm sorry. Go ahead, sir. I apologize. I guess we didn't. Have a motion, second, further discussion. All those in favor, say yes.
Yes.
Any opposed, like, signed, passes unanimously. Sir, name and address for the record, sir.
Thank you. Mayor and City Council, good evening. My name is Stuart Buchanan. My work address is Box 1545, Titusville 32781. I would like to take just a moment to talk to you about the future of residential projects here in the city of Titusville. As some of you know, I was born and raised in Titusville. I grew up here. My family has actually lived in North Pervard for several generations and in Titusville in particular. I've spent the last 25 years working for city and county government. In fact, I had the pleasure of working for Peggy Busaka at Pervard County. As a child growing up here, so many of us were children of KSC employees, Kennedy Space Center employees. My father, for example, was a fire lieutenant with NASA Fire Rescue for 41 years. All of our friends' parents either worked at a KSC, or they worked in professions that supported those employees. They were local physicians. They were local attorneys, surveyors, contractors, builders, everything that was necessary to support that population. What we have now is a resurgence of Kennedy Space Center, a huge resurgence of Kennedy Space Center. What a lot of people don't necessarily realize, unless you're in the transportation planning, is how many of the employees are driving from Orange County, Seminole County, Osceola County to work and then returning back to those counties at the end of the day. In the very near future, you're going to have a number of residential projects come before you. Some of those are within your city limits. Some of them are just outside your city limits, but they're within your consumptive use permit. They're in your water service area. I would encourage that these, this new generation of Kennedy Space Center employees live and work here in North Pervard. That we encourage, I would ask you to look favorably upon those projects when they come before you, so that we have the next generation of Kennedy Space Center employees who not only work here, but they live here, and that the federally funded salaries that they enjoy are spent here in our community. I'll be happy to answer any questions that you have.
Counsel, anybody have any questions? I'm sorry? No?
If you don't mind. Stuart, what do you do?
I was the, was previously, the senior planner for Pervard County Board of County Commissioners. I handled all the comprehensive planning. I also wrote all the capital grants for Public Works. I also reviewed grant agreements. I reviewed the grant agreement. I assisted your Assistant City Attorney and the county attorney at the time, Scott Knox, for the redevelopment of your mall. I would do capital projects, state and federal highway grants for intersections, roadway improvements, roadway widens, new roadway construction.
Thank you. I would agree with you. We'd like to have him here.
Yes, ma'am.
I, I think everybody up here feels the same way you do, and we're trying to work toward that. We have quite a few already started or on the drawing board. I think we're talking in the thousands at this point, because there's some large tracks along that are already contemplating doing what you're asking. And we are certainly encouraging them.
Yes, Mayor, and thank you very much.
Thank you, sir. Give me a minute. Next person to talk, please.
Good evening, Counsel. Mark Pugh, 410 North Carpenter. I have a request tonight that is a request that I've been working through the city manager's office. Being here tonight is not a reflection on him not addressing my concern. It's just a matter of timing of the meeting. So I don't want him to feel in any way slighted that I'm speaking to you. I just wanted to bring it to y'all's attention as well. At last meeting, it's my understanding that you passed the shoreline protection ordinance. By my own admission, I failed to see any of the notifications that were put to the public about that ordinance, so I had not followed it. But after reading it over the past week, I came to the conclusion that while the goal appeared to be of that ordinance to streamline the processes that applied specifically to properties along the Indian River Lagoon, that the resulting ordinance actually expanded the scope to all Class III waters instead of specifically those properties. As a landowner on the Class III waters of South Lake, after reading those ordinances, I realized I had a whole bunch of ordinances on me that I did not have before. A lot of things on setbacks, impervious, septic and sewer permitting, stormwater vegetation, and those lovely submerged land rights and such. Again, that was me for not seeing the notifications. I thought that was just how things sometimes work, until I read the one section in what was in the agenda that said that the landowners along the Indian River Lagoon specifically were sent, written notification of those changes and had been meeting and having discussions through the workshops that were held in December and notified of the planning meetings. A little disappointed in that in the city. If these ordinance were widened in scope to the Class III waters, which do include South Lake and Fox Lake properties within the city, it would have been nice to have been given the same, how do I put that, the same notice that the other property owners were given. I don't know if that's an oversight of understanding and perhaps even a misunderstanding of my part of Class III waters. But as the Lake Watch volunteer for the state of Florida, collecting water samples on South Lake, I was told I was doing that in participation of Class III water management. So my request is, one, correct me if I'm wrong, and if I am not, it would be nice to see the city make notification to the landowners. There are dozens of us along South Lake and Fox Lake that didn't get that opportunity to speak. At least let them know that they do have the ordinances on them, and also offer them an explanation as to why they were not afforded that same luxury of what was done with the I R L. So, thank you.
I apologize that you didn't get notification. I can't say why. But we also had a workshop, and I know that was publicized. So I'm not admonishing you.
Yeah. And I appreciate, I said, that's all on me. It's just, once you make the notification once to one owner, it looks poor when it doesn't happen to everyone.
I understand what you're saying perfectly. Ms. Busaka, you're anticipating my question, I'm sure.
What questions can I help you with?
Was this ordinance take into account the other types of Class III?
It does impact Class III waters. I didn't know about Mr. Pugh's concerns until today. I have done some research about setbacks. There is no zonings along either Fox Lake or South Lake in which setbacks have been increased by this ordinance. What we had planned to do, again, this came up about 3 o'clock this afternoon when I got a second email from Mr. Pugh, that we had planned to put together a list of ways in which this ordinance may impact these property owners. We were going to mail them to the property owner and to say, if you have concerns, please talk with us. But it seems, one of the issues that we talked about is the fact that this was largely a ordinance that was related to a replacement of an A I P, which was only required along the lagoon. But many of the issues related to this ordinance are unlikely to have any impact on South Lake and Fox Lake. For instance, we don't see a lot of seawalls in that area with the high energy like we do on the lagoon. But if Mr. Pugh had given me just one more day, I would have been able to get back to him. Then it would have been fine. So we'll work it out.
Okay. So you're presently going to speak to all of those people?
Yes, sir. And I appreciate Mr. Pugh taking all of the time that he has to learn about this, and I'm sure that we can figure this out.
Very good. Mr. Pugh, we're working on it. And I'm sure Ms. Busaka will give you a call. Thank you, sir. Anyone else that wants to speak on the petitions and requests?
Stan Johnson, 860 Point Set Avenue. I'm going to give you a story, a true story that I, that I'm telling you because of just a recent conversation I had with a council member. And I was in my twenties here in Titusville, and I went to a place on Hopkins called, it's either Brew and Q or Q and Brew. So there's a pool harbor, and I don't really drink and stuff. But I went, I just went there, and I came in, came in the door, and I went up to the counter, which pass all the pool table that come to the counter. It's in the very back of the room. And, and everything was fine. And then all of a sudden, the guy who was behind the counter, he gets, he gets agitated, and he looks, and he says, oh, look, look. And I looked behind me. I don't see anything. He said, look, call the police. Call the police. We got to call the police. And the other guy, and there's another guy behind the counter. And I looked back. I don't see anything going on. But they said, what are they doing here? I looked back again. I don't see anything going on. So, so they called the police, and the police come. There's three police officers come. And they come up to these two fellows that are at the pool table, and they're playing pool, and they're well-dressed, well-behaved, in their 20s or 30s. They're, you know, they're about my height and a little bit stockier than that. And they were black. And so one of the police officers, he's got this big tummy, big tummy like this. And so he goes like this, and he keeps his arms down, says, who's down here? Who's down here, boy? Pushes him, pushes him, pushes him around.
Can you, can you tell me what your request or petition is?
I want you to listen to what I have to say. You're taking my time.
Sir, you talk to me that way, and you won't be talking very long. I'll have you.
Okay. That's my petition. I'm asking you now. I don't want you to use my time.
I, I just told you what you got to do. I'm not taking your time. I'm telling you. Bring it back. It's a amusing story, but we have other things to do.
It's an amusing story to you. It's an amusing story to you. Okay. So what's happened is these, these, these police officers and the other guys, the other fellows kind of trapped in there. And I know you don't want to hear about this. And I want you to listen to this. So, so this is going on, and everything, like I said, was peaceful there. And then I'm thinking, I shouldn't be here. Man, this is not, this is not the right place for me.
Please stop. He's going to tell you the same thing I am, and I'll, I'll take care of it. You get up here, and you're disrupting our meeting with these nonsensical things that just take up our time. And none of us appreciate it. And the people out there that have real business to do with us don't appreciate it. You got seconds left. Use it.
Okay. You've taken a lot of my time already.
Yes, sir, I have.
Okay. Well.
Your time is up. Sit down, please.
All right. Okay.
Who else would like to speak, sir?
Thank you, Mayor and Counsel.
Yes, sir.
My name's Aaron Graves, 4535 Byron Avenue. I've lived in Titusville roughly five years. And I love Titusville. I love the community. And since I've been here, my life has changed. And I'm so grateful for the people that have been involved in it. I've come alongside under the bridge and planting that and founding that ministry, which is a homeless, hurting, and in need ministry. And we were involved still now, up to three years, dealing with families in the northern corridor of Titusville between South Street and Garden and to Singleton and to U S One. And within this corridor, I've seen every type of problem, from addiction to prostitution, which I know you all are well aware. But my heart is for these people. And I have been to the depths of hell in which they are at. And I go alongside them, and I tried my best to raise them up. And God has called me out of, under the bridge, into a new youth ministry. And in that same area, I've called it Living in Acts. I'm the president of it, and I hope to intentionally invest into the lives of the children and hopefully infiltrate the family and get to the core of some of these problems. It's hard to do by myself, but God gives me the strength, and he provides the right people. Today, I just want to ask for your support and maybe partnership in areas that you would be available or adamant in seeing change in this area. Because I believe that we have an opportunity, and there is hope for the next generation. And not only that, but also hope today for the families and people in that area. So if we can form together with an agenda and a programmatic way of intentionally investing, then we can get their attention. And they're not just getting fed garbage all day long at home and in their community, but they're getting some bit of truth, and we're bringing some bit of light. And I do believe that there's going to be a change if we stay at it. And I just want to thank you for your time of listening and consideration. And I hope that in the future, we can work together in restoring our community.
Thank you, sir, and thank you for what you do. We have a few groups that we already work with that are here in town. And perhaps we can give you entree to them, because they're doing the same thing that you're doing. And I think that might be the best way to go. They already have things developed.
Very helpful, yeah. Working together.
Yes. You just call City Hall, ask for me, and I'll get back to you as soon as I can.
Yeah, thank you.
Yes, sir.
Thank you, Mayor.
Is there any questions?
Yes, sir.
Okay.
So number one, thank you, Mayor. It's a real big, it's a really big deal when someone wants to go put hard work in to go help folks. We've been talking about helping the youth. And I think that we are headed in that direction, but in certain portions of our community. And to be fair, you know, you talk about the youth of potentially homeless or in really bad situations. Not, that was not the youth I was thinking about. And so thank you for just putting some work in on that. At least updates at a minimum, I would be eager to. But Mayor, I appreciate you making, linking us on those relationships. So thank you for your hard work.
Yeah, you're welcome. Every month on the first, we are doing an outreach event at Blanton Park, the corner of Main Street and Park Avenue. Last month, 31st, we did our launching event. We had a turnout of 100 people. We had four different performers, a 15-person youth dance group, two salvations and two baptisms. It was really amazing. Chamberlain's barbecue, Kay's barbecue, Publix. A lot of people came together to make it happen.
That's great.
So I want to be able to continue to see that type of investment. But I'm thankful for the opportunity and the platform to share it with you guys.
And you have one more question from Member Diesel?
When you say "we," who are, who are "we"? What is it, your, your group?
Yes, it is the group of volunteers and service people that have the like-minded vision of living in acts and what that means of service, how we develop program, how we develop the outreach. It's really just me and like two or three other people. But, you know.
Well, you said earlier that, you know, it's really hard to do by yourself, and it is. And again, like the rest of the people up here, I'm very impressed with that. And it's certainly something I hope I have going on in my own life to some degree. But at the same time, as Mayor said, and I'm sure he can guide you tremendously, but there are groups out there right now. And the one that I would say off the top of my head is The Grove.
Yep.
With Barry and Brad Russell. The Grove with Barry and Brad Russell, the outreach that they have going on, and I guess what I'm saying is if you could join forces with groups like that, it may be even better.
Yeah.
But no matter what, you know, it's kind of like the starfish story, threw that starfish in the ocean and saved him, help that one. There's thousands of them out there, you're not going to get them all, but that one starfish you saved, you saved that one, so we, I appreciate you.
Thank you, sir.
Mr. Garrison, you know The Grove and the...
I do.
Yes, sir. If you will introduce him to them.
Actually, Aaron knows Bradenberry very well.
Oh, okay.
He did their apprenticeship through, through The Grove, and Pastor Koppick and I both know Bradenberry, and are in wonderful terms with them. And, and so, yeah, he's in contact with The Grove, and...
Okay, that's great.
And we, and we're doing, we're doing as much as we can to help him as well with services and goods and items that help them with their stuff, so, yeah.
Great, thank you very much.
Thank you, guys.
Yeah.
Yes, we have one more question for you.
Just stay seated. I was going to say Crosswinds, which is actually in Cocoa, also runs a homeless shelter, and they have housing for homeless kids.
Really?
They actually have a band that goes and checks under all the bridges to try to find the kids.
I used to go there as a child.
Okay, so you know how to, okay. Didn't want you to forget that.
Yeah, right?
Potential resource.
No, I should definitely contact them, that's amazing, thank you.
Okay, good luck.
Okay, anyone else that wishes to speak on the petitions and requests? I see no one. Next item is the consent agenda.
Yes, sir, I'll read the consent agenda items for the record. Consent agenda item 8A, approve the budget amendment transferring funds to Capital Project Z01848 for the purchase of seven laptop computers for the Titusville Police Department. Consent agenda item 8B, approve the award bid 18B016 to Custom Truck and Body Works Incorporated of Woodbury, Georgia, for the purchase of a new 2018 F1, correction, F350 Squad Emergency Response Vehicle for a total cost of $104,835. Additionally, approve the utilizing the remaining $35,185 in project funds for the purchase of the miscellaneous tools and equipment required. Consent agenda item 8C, authorize the renewal of the auto aid agreement between Titusville Fire Department and Emergency Services and Brevard County Fire Rescue, and authorize the mayor to execute the agreement. Consent agenda item 8D, approve the budget amendment providing additional funding for the purchase of 12 planters, five benches, four trash receptacles for the downtown courts from R E P Services of Lake Mary, Florida, in the amount of $18,238.91 in accordance with the Clay County contract RFP 13148, various equipment amenities for parks and playgrounds. Additionally, approve the associated budget amendment. Consent agenda item 8E, authorize the mayor to execute Amendment 1 of the Florida Department of Environmental Protection Grant Agreement, number G0416, for the Drayfield Stormwater Park. Consent agenda item 8F, increase the purchase order authorization for Delta Construction Corporation of Florida by $48,000 for the vendor of record relocation and repairs of the city water system utilities associated with the Florida East Coast Regional Rail Trail System Construction Project. We do have cards on consent agenda item 8A, 8B, 8C, 8E, and 8F. And council members, do you have any additional ones you'd like to pull, which would be 8D?
I guess not.
Okay. Clerk, will you call the cards?
Item 8A, it's Stan Johnston.
Stan Johnston, 860 Point Set Avenue. This is something I already just mentioned about when we're talking about the solar, solar cells. I don't quite understand it because it says a price for the laptop computers of 21,700, then it says a final price of 43,400, looks like training and some other things, so, so I'm saying at this time against it because I don't understand. It sounds like $43,400 for seven laptops, computers, plus the training. And so, I want to say is that's, seems like a lot of money, and I'm not entirely clear on what, what they're talking about, but, but we've got, we've got other things, I don't want to go too far about it, but, but as far as I know, is that the security system here in City Hall is not operating properly, that it's just like on March 27th, it didn't work. So, I would like the city to consider this thing, and I'd like answers to the questions I have about the, what does this additional 21,700 make it twice the cost? So, if I can have answers to those questions, I certainly would appreciate it. Thank you.
Can I call the next card, please?
Item 8B is Stan Johnston.
I'm asking for approval of this, this particular item, but I'm asking with conditional that the city would fix this security system, it's important. I mean, when we're spending, this is a total of 104 plus 35,000, that's over $139,000, and here I am, I've been notified that, that the security system has problems, it doesn't work, and nobody answered the questions to my 8A, which I was surprised about. I had the, I asked what would be the answers to that, but I didn't get it. So, I would also like is, is that, make sure that the, the video and the audio equipment that the police officers have, it seems like it didn't work either on March 27th, so, whether they didn't turn it on, so...
Yes, sir.
The content isn't germane, the speaker isn't germane to the issue at hand, so...
Sir, if you can't stand, speak to the topic, I'm going to ask you to sit down.
Okay, all right. Well, what I'm talking about is in terms of money, is how are you going to spend your money? Where are you going to get to spend your money? And so, you need to spend your money where it's needed, and at this time, is there's a greater need, there's certainly a greater need for the, for the police department to spend it on whether it's training for their police officers to use their audio/video equipment, or whether you get the system fixed in the City Hall, and that's important. So, I'd like you to spend your money more wisely than, than like for this, this one vehicle. It seems like you need to spend your money more wisely. Thank you.
Next card, please.
Item 8C is Stan Johnston.
Name is Stan Johnston, 860 Point Set Avenue, and I'm on 8C. We're looking at an agreement between Titusville and Brevard County, and I think that's a great idea, and I'm for it, and I'm for it in other, other areas that we need to look at. And something that I've mentioned to you before is that, is that it's even in our code, is that we are, it's recommended that we go ahead and work with, together with Brevard County to get our ditches cleaned, floodways cleaned. And so, in a similar way, is I would like to see the ditches, I mean, excuse me, I'd like us to work together with the county, like we're doing in this case.
Sir, you're getting off the subject.
Just, okay, just want you to work, work together, and the city and the county, because we can do it, we can do it. And this is a good idea, and now we've got, what we did is, in this case, we did with a pilot project, pilot project. And, I mean, if you, if you read what's in our agenda packet, we began with about, what was it, six months or something like that, and now we're going to three years. So, that's, that's a good idea. Thank you.
Clerk, next card, please.
Item 8E, Mr. Johnston.
My name is Stan Johnston, 860 Point Set Avenue, and in this particular one, is that I'm asking for approval of this one also, and, and, but, but what we need to do on this is that we have problems with, with, with when we permit these things, and the permit particularly in this is that, is that it doesn't explain to our council how much it's going to cost to maintain these projects, and I'm, I'm surprised because it's even there on the permit, maintenance and operation, and by golly, I have seen so many of them, they don't even fill it out for our project. So, for example, in the case of the senior center, it's gone, it's gone a lot, there's a lot of money spent, now we have, now we have these floating islands and so forth. So, so I'm asking, which I've asked before, is that, that it's clear when we do our permitting, and when it's presented to council, how much is this going to cost, this annual cost? Because you're not getting the information, Publix not getting the information, and this is, and, and together that, I think it'd be good, is what some, some people do, is like, for example, when we had the bridge over Garden Street, put down the, put down a placard and say, "How much it cost? How much the maintenance cost? It'd be nice to know." Because we don't know how much we're paying things, and then we get to the point where we're almost bankrupt, we need to maintain what we've got. So, thank you very much.
Next card, please.
Item 8F, Stan Johnston.
Item 8F is, is a, is a project, and I work on these type of projects, I've done it many times, it's a construction project, and unbelievably, what it says on here, is if you read, if you read what happened, is it says, "This rail trail construction project from 2016 to date has resulted in 15 fiber optic cable repairs." How in the world could that possibly happen? And then it says, "And over 100 pull box replacements." The question is, what happened? This is, this is unbelievable that this happened on a construction, construction project. And by the way, is I've been out there, and I've seen some of the damage that's been done. I can't believe it. Now, how in the world did it happen? So, I think that, and that you should not approve this until you find out what happened, because these are supposed to be located so that they're not damaged, and if they're, and if they're damaged, by golly, it's supposed to be at the cost of the contractor, not for us to give them more and more money where they busted something up. So, you've got a problem here, and it looks like someone's messed up big time. Someone's messed up, and it's, now it's, who, who's paying for the mistake? We are. And the mistake is not a little bit of money, we could have had plenty of money, we could have built the solar, solar thing on this. What is it, what do they want, 45,000, 48,000? It's, it doesn't make sense, this is another one area which, which, you know, you don't like me to hear, hear me say, say this, but this is under the leadership of Sean Stoffer.
Sir, I will not have you talking about our staff anymore.
I mentioned his name.
Don't.
Don't even mention his name.
Don't.
Don't mention his name, right?
That's correct.
That's right, don't mention his name. Okay, so, so, we, what we need to do is, is that we need to look into this. If, if I were working on the city, by golly, I'd look into this and see, what the heck happened? Maybe you're not interested, but you should, and I've been on projects like this all the time. And when you break one fiber optic cable, it is, can be very expensive, huge amount of money, and it's supposed to have, for example, it should have at least a locator, somehow locate it, whether it's a locator cable with it, with the fiber optic or something, something's messed up big time. In other words, we built the project, we should know where the, where the fiber optic cables are, it's our project, how in the world are we now having contractors go in there, busted to pieces, costing all this money? And, and I guess council's just going to go, is going to do like a, what do you call it, a coat of silence and won't say a thing about it. But this is a big thing. So, if you all want to help the city out, look into it, look into it. I wouldn't approve it like this. Thank you very much.
For the rest of you, and the rest of the 47,000 people in Brevard, in Titusville, we have meetings, we come on, on different days, and we have separate meetings with the city manager and staff. We get the packet the week before on a Thursday. I personally go over it on, on either Saturday or Sunday, and it usually takes me four or five hours to do it. Then on Monday morning, I have a meeting with the city manager, and if I have any questions on anything, I ask him there, and that's what the people of Titusville have elected us to do. If I don't get a satisfactory answer, I ask him at that time to do what it takes to either find out the information or rectify the situation. So, it's not like we're ignoring what's up there, even though certain people would like you to believe that. Sir, Mr. City Manager, we've, where are we?
Sir, to vote on the consent agenda items A through F at this point.
Okay, we'll go right, right into that, all right.
Mayor, could I, first, for the people who are out there that don't have the advantage of having the package ahead of time, can we clarify A and F as to the amount of the laptops, the amount we are spending on the laptops, and the why we had the incidents with having to spend the extra money?
I don't know that we can do it at this time.
Sure, item eight is equipment and training.
And the total price?
It's listed as the total budget of 43,000, I guess.
Okay. And then on F?
We are under litigation on that particular item.
Satisfactory?
Satisfactory, I just wanted others to understand.
That's fine, but you know the problem, so...
I know, I know.
All right, I'd like a motion on the consent agenda, please, to approve.
Move to approve consent agenda item 8A, purchase of laptops for Titusville Police Department. 8B, purchase of 2018 Squad Emergency Response Vehicle. 8C, authorization for renewal of auto aid agreement between Titusville Fire and Emergency Services and Brevard County Fire Rescue. Item 8D, purchase of amenities for downtown courts. 8E, Florida Department of Environmental Protection Grant Agreement Extension. 8F, rail trail utility relocation and repair.
Do I have a second?
Second.
I have a motion, a second, any further discussion? All those in favor, say yes.
Yes.
Any opposed, same sign, passes unanimously. We are on 9A, second reading. City Attorney?
Yes, sir, this is item 9A. At this time, I'll read your rules regarding quasi judicial proceedings. During the public hearing portion of this meeting, anyone wishing to speak on a quasi judicial item must first sign a public hearing agenda card and sign the oath contained thereon. These cards are located on the table in the back of the council chambers. Those speaking in favor of requests will be heard first, those opposed will be heard second, and those who wish to make a public comment on the item will speak third. The applicant may make a brief rebuttal if necessary. Witnesses may be cross-examined by the applicant, council, staff representatives, such other representatives as authorized by the council. If you have photographs, sketches, or documents that you desire for the city council to consider, they must be submitted into evidence and will be retained by the city. Please submit such exhibits to the city clerk. City clerk, have all persons wishing to speak before the city council signed an oath card?
Yes, sir.
If there's anyone present who has not signed an oath card that wishes to speak on a quasi judicial item, please submit a card at this time. City clerk, have all agenda items been properly advertised?
Yes, sir.
Have any council members visited any of the sites or spoken to any members of the public regarding an item to be reviewed?
I've driven by it.
Okay, thank you. Mayor, this is item 9A, which is rezoning number one, 2018, which is also ordinance number 19, 2018. An ordinance of the City of Titusville, Florida, amending ordinance number five, 1993, of the City of Titusville, Florida, by amending the zoning map made a part of said ordinance by reference by replacing the present community commercial CC zoning district to regional commercial RC zoning for a 3.69 acre property located at 2300 Columbia Boulevard and providing for an effective date.
The Planning and Zoning Commission recommends approval of this action 5.0. The applicant, Kimberly Renzeka, on behalf of the property owner, Jen Lee Development Incorporated, is requesting to rezone 3.69 acre property located at 23 Columbia Boulevard. Request is to rezone the property from community commercial CC zoning district to regional commercial RC zoning designation within the comprehensive plan future land use designation of commercial high intensity. The partial is 3.69 acres, which meets the minimum lot requirement of two acres for the proposed RC zoning district. The rezoning will allow for the establishment of lumber and building supply sales use, which is permitted within the RC district. The legal description of the property will be verified before the city council and the public hearing. Ms. Busaka has a presentation for you.
I do. This property is, was designated as a community commercial when it was annexed into... This property is, was designated as a community commercial when it was annexed into the city in 1998 and has been occupied, has had a building constructed on at that time. The building is not proposed to be changed, just the use is proposed to be changed. The zoning designations on the surrounding properties are residential, multifamily, and community commercial. Comprehensive plan, we, the staff has found that the rezoning could be, found to be consistent with policy 1.9.1, which talks about direct access at arterial intersections, and policy 1.8.3, which talks about commercial development shall be accessible or provide essential public services at the level of service adopted. The property is located in the city's urban service area, and the property fronts along Columbia Boulevard. It is in the Zone X flood zone, and the proposed community, I'm sorry, the proposed regional commercial zoning district allows for a variety of commercial uses with a maximum building coverage of 30%. Staff does not believe that the uses allowed within the RC zoning district will create a nuisance to the general public, and based upon the analysis, we recommend approval.
Thank you, ma'am. Does any council have questions of Ms. Busaka? I see no cards up there. I'll open the public hearing. Clerk, please call the speakers by card.
Kimberly Rizanka.
Good evening, Mayor, members of the city council. My name is Kim Rizanka. I'm an attorney with law firm of Cantwell &amp; Goldman in Cocoa, Florida, 32922. I'm here representing Jen Lee Development, Inc. Larry Rhodes, the principal, has recently had surgery and is not able to be here. However, the tenant, Bobby Jacobs, of Secure Fences here, and he'll tell you about what he plans to do with that property and hopefully eventually plans to buy the property. Ms. Busaka covered most of it, and I'm sure you read the staff report in your four to five hours of preparation. But I do want to give you a little bit of history about this property and why we're here. This property was developed by Mr. Rhodes when he annexed into the city in 1998. He had a full-blown site plan. There are additional buildings that can be put on there. It's all been developed with retention for additional buildings, and Mr. Jacobs does hope to build other buildings and add more development to it. This has had several tenants, originally an aluminum company, Sunbelt Rentals was there, as well as an FPL contractor. All of these uses had outdoor storage or outdoor equipment, which wasn't allowed in the CC zone. So, what we're trying to do is allow the fence company to come in and have a little bit of outdoor storage, which would be fenced off and buffered so no one will see it, and to meet your code. So, that's why we've come in here with a lumber sales idea under the RC. So, we're trying to make it consistent with your code, allow for more development of the property, and a better use for the property. He's, Mr. Jacobs will tell you he's going to have displays, custom fencing, he's going to put in a new decorative fence, and upgrade the property. He's already started working on the painting of it and doing things like that. As Ms. Busaka said, this appears to be consistent with your comprehensive plan with the zonings in the area. It's on a major arterial road. It won't create a nuisance. It will have, it does have proper buffering, and will even have more buffering. Mr. Jacobs has even talked to some of the residential neighbors to talk about what he's going to do. And since the staff recommends approval, we would request that you approve this rezoning.
Thank you. Any questions of the speaker?
Right.
I see none. Thank you, ma'am.
Thank you.
Next card, please.
Bobby Jacobs.
My name is Bobby Jacobs, owner of Secure Fence and Rail.
Address, sir?
7761 Windover Way.
Very good.
We're official in Titusville now, so. I love this city. I love this county. Born and raised over Seminole County. When my wife and I first moved over, I think y'all have heard this story, let me keep it short. We seen that location when we first got over here, and I knew that was the place I wanted to be and grow, you know, my company. And we're here, thankful to y'all and the residents and the community backing us up. And we plan on making that property beautiful and giving all the tourists and all the people from Orlando and Space Center something to look at. And it's going to be nice. We're going to do fences, columns, landscaping, lighting. We're going to go all out on it. If you've seen my other locations, we get, you know, quite extravagant in our displays to catch people's attention and also give the community somewhere to come and look and touch and feel and see what they're going to buy before they actually buy it. So, we look forward to, you know, growing in Titusville and staying here and prospering and hiring employees and keep doing what we do.
Thank you, sir.
Thank you, guys.
Any questions of the speaker? I see none. Thank you, sir.
All right. Thank you.
Next card, please.
The last card is Lynn Pearson.
Good evening, Mayor and council members. My name is Lynn Pearson. I got one of your little orange cards because we own some property, some commercial OR property across the street, and we've owned it since 2004. My initial concern was why they wanted to rezone it, because over time, like the attorney said, there had been rental equipment and it had been kind of unsightly and different kind of storage containers and even a few compartment-type things, metal, metal things. So, it wasn't really pretty, and I didn't really know that it shouldn't have been there in the first place. So, what I did is I actually called the planners and talked to them extensively and said, "Well, isn't there a reason why you can't keep it community commercial and just let them do what they need to do?" And that was like, "No, you can't do that." So, I did do the research on that. I actually went and introduced myself to Bobby, the owner, and I went by his property on US-1 near the power plant to see how he actually had maintained it, what kind of fences he had done, what kind of displays. And he actually does a nice job. He's got a big piece of property, and right now you can see some of the lumber, but I do believe he will do what he says he's going to do, and I'm sure the city will hold him to following when he needs to. And we welcome some industry and a good neighbor. And I love his saying, it says, oh, gosh, I didn't bring my glasses, but anyway, his secure fence, they have a motto that they're a good neighbor, and I do believe he will be a good neighbor to all the residents.
It's a good fence, thanks.
There you go. I thought it was really catchy. So, that was my only concern is, in the past, we'd had equipment and stuff stored that wasn't in a nice way. But he'll have a lot of heat since he lives in Windover if he doesn't do what he says he's going to. Thank you.
Thank you. It's good to see you again. Haven't seen you in some time. Okay. Next card.
We have no more cards.
Good. Okay. Any questions, discussion, from council for staff or? Nope. Okay. We'll, I'll accept the motion.
I would move to approve rezoning number 1-2018, the property from the community commercial zoning district to the regional commercial zoning district at 2300 Columbia Boulevard. And I'm assuming Mr. Broom wants them done separately.
No, you would just say, "And the associated ordinance number 19, 2018."
Okay. And the associated ordinance number 19.
2000.
2000. Okay.
Good job.
That was good.
I have a second.
Second.
I have a motion and a second. Any further discussion? Roll call vote, please, clerk.
Member Diesel?
Yes.
Member Nelson?
Yes.
Mayor Johnson?
Yes.
Vice Mayor Behringer?
Yes.
Member Stokel?
Yes.
Passes unanimously. The next item, 9B, has been asked, we've been asked to table it to the next meeting.
Yes, sir. I'd like Ms. Busaka to explain what happened here so that council has an idea, and then the date certain that we'll come back to you.
I'm not sure I know exactly what happened, but I do know that the notices that were to be sent to citizens within 500 feet were, we sent the wrong set of addresses, and people on Daily On were noticed about this.
Oh, that's nice to know.
So, we want to make sure that the neighbors are aware that this issue is there, and we will be sending out letters, postcards tomorrow notifying them that this item will be heard in two weeks.
Very good. Thank you. Do we need a motion to table on this?
Yes, you'll need a motion to table, and to what date?
Okay. Pick a date. Anyone?
Then I'd move to table it to the next meeting, which would be, I don't have a calendar in front of me.
The 24th.
24th.
Okay. I have a motion. I have a second.
Second.
Motion is second. Further discussion? I hear none. I guess this requires a roll call as well, if there's an ordinance? No? For a table? Not for a table? Oh, okay. All in favor, say yes.
Yes.
Any opposed? Same sign. Passes unanimously. There are no ordinances first reading, no old business, no new business. We have petitions and requests from the public. Anyone would like to speak? Sir?
Ladies and gentlemen, I'm not a slick talker. I'd just like to bring something to your attention. I've been trying to open a business now called Craig's Online Auto Sales for about six weeks.
Oh, I'm sorry. Name for the record.
Craig Huckabee.
Address?
112 Hill Top Drive.
Okay.
Okay. A lot of these older buildings, and I think I heard some talk about that as I came in earlier, but it's a physical impossibility to get them to the point of your zoning requirements. So, I don't know if that makes them useless or what it takes, but I feel like the zoning requirements are, need to be looked at to be able to help the small businessmen like myself and four or five others that I've talked to about this situation. Something needs to be done to help them.
Okay, sir.
I don't know.
Ms. Busaka, do you have any comments on this?
I can explain Mr. Huckabee's situation.
Okay.
He would like to open a car dealership, which is basically an online dealership. By understanding that the state law requires that he have parking on-site for X number of cars, and that's his problem, because he has to be able to store cars. So, he could go into a limited number of zonings. Every time Mr. Huckabee has found a property that he wants to use, it doesn't seem to be in the correct zoning. Finally, he found a piece of property that seemed to be exactly what he wanted, and it was in the downtown mixed use, in the midtown area. Well, the code requires that for car sales, not necessarily for other car, for other uses, but for car sales, that the property be brought up to the standards of the current standards, which meant landscaping and all kinds of things. There is a provision in which Mr. Huckabee could request a series of waivers. I think he requested, I'm going to say he requested eight. I think the system worked that he got seven of them. Everything is, we think, moving quickly along, only to find out that the person who owned the property had put some millings down and created a parking lot without any retention. So, while that's not Mr. Huckabee's doing, he can't open his business until that issue has been resolved.
And those are state laws, as well as our ordinances?
Our ordinance is the one that requires that if you put down 1,000 feet, 1,000 square feet of impervious surface, you have to put drainage in. And our ordinance is the one that requires when you have a car lot in the midtown that you have to come up to standards. It's the state ordinance, it's the state law which requires him to have some kind of outdoor storage for his car lot. So, he's between a whole group of things. Staff has tried for the last six weeks to help Mr. Huckabee, and it's very challenging. I think he even told us during the meeting that we had that the state law had said these online car sales were also tricky for them.
Yeah, they've said, "We have nowhere for you to go."
Right.
They would like for us to have a point of sale.
Right.
Even though we're selling online. So, I'm in la-la land.
Hmm. One of the problems, sir, is that anything we change for you, then other people will come in and want the same thing. It's what we call a slippery slope.
And they should have it.
Well, not necessarily. I mean, if everybody did everything they wanted, then the problem with our lagoon would only get worse.
Yeah. Let me give you an example. One deal we're having here is on the millings that was put down on the property. Millings, I don't know who came up with that, are, if they're going to call it a impervious surface, then it should be legal for a car lot, because that's what they want, is a, how do you, what is your?
Unfortunately, the code, and this is another issue. The code requires it to be paved. Well, millings aren't paved, but they are impervious. So, you can see that there's a lot of details that Mr. Huckabee and staff have lived through in the last six weeks.
You can't really have your cake and eat it too. Either it's impervious or it's not.
Hardly not.
Either it's paving or, well, we don't know that for sure. Millings are gravel. I've never seen a gravel parking lot that, but if they're going to, if they're going to call it that.
Define millings for me, that's where they break up another road?
Ground-up road. Yeah. Asphalt.
Okay. And is it impervious or pervious?
It's considered pervious because you drive on it a few times and it sticks together pretty well. And again, this is not Mr. Huckabee's doing. This was the property owner who felt that he was improving the property. I mean, he just didn't understand that he put down about 3,000 square feet. At 1,000 square feet, you trip the threshold. So, it's very possible that there could be some real drainage issues on that site should it ever rain like it did last year. We're working through that with the property owner, who's been very responsive to us, but it is frustrating for Mr. Huckabee because he's ready to start business.
Any suggestions?
Well, actually, the staff actually called him this afternoon to try and suggest that he contact another property owner that we were aware of that was getting a, that had an RC zoning that might work for him. So, we have been trying to, but I think he's very frustrated. This has been a very challenging operation between the state law and the local ordinances.
But it's not just me. You made that point, that if you helped me, it wouldn't, everybody else.
And that's the problem I'm having, that it's not just you we're talking about.
That's right.
If it was just you, and that was the only one, well, that's probably a small lot and so forth. But if we do that, then everybody else that has a similar situation, regardless of their lot, regardless of whether it's this year, next year, will say, "Well, you let him do it." So, you know, we have an issue.
And I'll ask that question. What happens with the, with the other dealers, businesses? Everybody's parking on the grass. You've got a dealership down south here that parks 150 cars out on the grass, which is completely against code.
Is that against code?
That, it is supposed to be parked, paved parking, yes. And Mr. Huckabee has brought to our attention something that we already knew was a problem and that was already in code enforcement. So, there are people who don't do the right thing, and code enforcement works through the process, which, as you know, can be lengthy. And it is frustrating when you're following the rules and you see someone else who's not. Now, those people don't get away with it forever, but it takes a while to get through the process. I completely understand Mr. Huckabee's frustration.
There's churches, there's businesses, there's doctor's offices. Everybody parks on the grass. It's against the code.
Well, there is, I don't know if we still have it, but I remember a business I was in that we had overflowed parking, which was grass, and it was permissible. This goes back a long way, Peggy. You weren't here at the time.
Well, today, I can tell you that it simply is not something code enforcement may make a priority, but our code does not permit it. a priority, but our code does not permit it.
Yeah, no, I understand that. I'm just saying that at one time it was, but it's not anymore.
I just feel like if it's good for Craig, it ought to be good for everybody.
Well, that's not true. It's not good for the lagoon. And that's, that's a major problem that we have, sir, and I am, I am never going to vote for anything that puts more contaminants in that lagoon.
Possibly your rules need to be changed a little bit to make it right for everybody.
I think I just answered your, sir, I think I have the vice mayor wants to talk?
Yeah, I did, and maybe a question for you, and just for clarification, and it sounds like we're already there. So one, I hear you're in the frustrate, you want to get going, you want to do a business, you've got a model that probably works very well, and probably excessive parking beyond the needs of what you're actually going to use is right.
I have five parking spaces.
Right. So I, and I get that logic. I also understand the intent of the state of saying, well, you got to have something. And we, as a community, going, well, that's what this, traditionally, this is what that something looks like, and so we've tried to enhance, I believe, through the past years. And some of our larger dealerships, I think, have improved in such a manner. So traditionally, that, yeah, correct. So traditionally, I think that we made some steps in the right direction. I think the online market and the model that you're working with is probably something that is newer to us, as it is the state, so I thank you for bearing with the frustration as we work through that. It sounds, from economic development standpoint, that this is, the fact that staff is looking potentially for options that may work, I think fits in at least a goal of economic development for us. So I'm just saying, I feel very comfortable with staff saying, you know what, here's something that may work regulatory for what you're trying to do. Not every city would offer that, I think. So thank you for doing that. Wish I had a million dollar answer.
She's worked hard.
Yeah, I would be interested in, just through your experience, I would be interested in recommendations moving forward, because to be honest, I don't know how many people on the online car sales.
It's not just car sales.
Well, excuse me, yes, so.
Businesses total in this, in this town. You've got a lot of older, older buildings that, that won't, won't ever get to code.
Yeah.
Physical impossibility, setbacks, and, you know, things like that.
To err to the side of limiting scope to possibly be maybe more effective, specific to the issue that you're talking about, I personally would be more interested to see in your, because in your case, I think is unique in development, of which I don't think is going away. I think we're going to get more down the road potentially, as we work through this, if there are any recommendations to our policy to adjust or fit this model, I would be interested in it.
I'll give you an example, in Dallas, Texas, I know we're not in Dallas, but I've been doing a lot of research, 70% of all car sales are done online.
Right.
It's huge, and getting bigger every day. Nobody wants to go in and have to deal with all that.
Right. Thank you.
Thank you.
You might want to check in on that property before you give up entirely, that you were suggesting, there's another piece of property that may fit your needs, she said.
I'm going to do that, and I'm also going to send a letter with a lot of details in it to the city manager and my suggestions on what I think we should do.
Okay. Thank you, sir.
Thank you.
Anyone else wish to speak? Under petitions and requests? I see no one. Next item is mayor and council reports. You have my report, there is one letter that was just passed out, almost passed out.
Yes, sir, I'll cover that during my report.
Okay, good. All right.
We have one card too, Mayor Johnson.
I'm sorry?
We have one card as well.
Okay, we call a card, please?
Stan Johnston.
And I'm not sure if I'm allowed to do this, but I'm, what I'm asking you is that I feel like there should be some more things in your report. And I would, we met on March the 23rd with the city attorney and with chief of police, and I thought that might be something to be nice to be in the report. So that's, that's why I just wanted to comment on that. Maybe you want to comment on that, I don't know. Thank you.
Any other cards?
No, sir.
It says mayor and council report, any council, anybody else from council four? Vice mayor, is that you from the board?
No, it's actually for right now, sir. Yes, thank you. So just for the council's knowledge, we had a gentleman, Dr. DeFreeze, speak last night at the Space Coast League of Cities on the initiatives going on with the Indian River Lagoon. Mayor, thank you for, in previous meetings, you pointed out a map that shows the Titusville area has more blue than the other guys down south. And it's one lagoon and it's one voice, but it's nice to know that the efforts seem to be making a difference. And the, the two takeaways that I, I would bring back to council from that meeting, is that I think in the next two or three years, we're going to have an algae bloom that's going to wake everybody up again. And so the, taking the foot off the gas on the lagoon, I don't think is wise. And the reason for that is because if we're making headway and that's good, we should keep fishing when fishing's good. But the moment that I think that it goes wrong, everybody's going to remember, we should be doing something about it. So just being good stewards, I think that's appropriate actions. The second was that ultimately, a plan is going to get released here in about the next year and a half, that is going to have a really big ticket item on it across the board, a lot of money. And it's going to say, here's how you fix the lagoon, and here's what it's going to cost as a city, and comprehensively throughout multiple counties. And the reason I bring that up is that as we move forward, everybody wants change, but paying for that change is not always easy. Being said, I, I, at dinner, I had a conversation, I said, you know, at the reality, what, what can you do about it? And the takeaway was twofold. Number one, you do what you can, you do what you can. So that's going to mean a lot of different things to a lot of different people. So that means people at home, if you can do something at home, do something at home. That means as a city, if we can do something within the fiscal constraints we have, then we do something. But just a mentality of you do what you can. It ebbs and flows, sometimes you do more, sometimes you less, but do what you can. So that was one key point. The other point, I think, is, is worth mentioning, because I think it's very easy to become overwhelmed in conservation efforts, because of the sheer cost. And sometimes, I think that in an effort to try to do well, or sometimes just sell the idea that you're trying to do well, folks would make recommendations to only spend in one area while not working on other key issues for communities. As an example, if there are infrastructure improvements or things that would better our community, that we still need to do those things as well as the lagoon, not just one or just the other. And I, I hope that we are careful in reminding that. And coming from the gentleman who has spent his life studying estuaries, he made a key point, he goes, you're not going to do anything in conservation if there's no money. And there's no money if there's nobody paying taxes, and nobody's paying taxes for a town that they don't love to live in. So that balance of splitting funds on, you know, you might have to do a park, you might have to do, you might have to do these things, all, you know, all boats lift together. So I think there's some rhetoric from, to be frank, there's some rhetoric from down south, talking about what we should do and not do as communities. And I, I think it's rhetoric and it's ill-serving our community with, I think, a long-term strategy for what needs to happen. So, thank you.
Thank you. I agree with all of what you said, and I know Dr. DeFreeze for long, and he is a very knowledgeable person, needless to say, on what he does, so. And you're also right about that you can't take your foot off the gas, and unfortunately, you know, we had those get togethers on the bridge and held hands and everything, and everybody was for it. And then when it's looking a little better, and it's only a little better, and I think most of that is in our area, and I'm proud of that, then people start to forget. And you can't, not when you get something like this, because if you have seen the newspaper today or the TV, they're starting to have fish kills in South, for both, South and South Central. So it's, it's by no means over, and we do have to keep our foot on the pedal, as you said. Yes, ma'am, Member Nelson?
I was just going to say, I spent last Wednesday with the, at the Merritt Island Wildlife Refuge with the board members and Laura Lee Thompson, and we, we were having a discussion of the problems in the south moving north, and what it's going to do to our city, our area. And it's a shame, because it seems like we're doing everything we can, we're pretty much out of the game, and yet their problems are going to affect us. And there's not, I mean, stay on track. We can hope that they sort of get their act together, but I think we're going to have to realize it's coming and do what we can.
Yeah, well, our staff has really put an effort into getting grants, and that's the reason we got to do those.
Yeah. They've done a great job.
Yeah, it's, it's been terrific, and we're seeing the results. I mean, you actually can see it on a map.
You see the grasses again.
Yeah, so, but because they're not doing it elsewhere, doesn't mean we should stop, frankly. We got to, we got to keep doing what we're doing, and hopefully they'll get the idea. Sooner or later, the state will come in and say, you got to.
I'm thinking about the people who are dumping sewer into the river and, you know, they're not helping us.
Well, yeah, none of that is, but I, I think if the people who are, want to get it done, keep working on it, and don't give up, then there's more chance of everybody else having to get on board. Member Diesel?
Yeah, I was similarly speaking. First of all, Mayor, without even being on this topic, I appreciated the fact that at least four times today, you noted how important the Indian River Lagoon was. And I think this council's shown that very clearly. I remember coming to a lagoon information seminar in this chambers, even before the 2016 election, and it had a lot to do with the half-cent sales taxes, why I think we had this seminar. I remember watching and being concerned, and then thinking, what can we do? And the whole time I watched it, and I asked the question afterwards, and the more I hear, the more I feel the same question is valid. For everything we're doing up here, and we are doing a fine job with our staff and the commitment from this council, it's kind of like cleaning a, an aquarium on one side. And we're cleaning our aquarium, and we're doing our part, and we're doing our part, and I don't believe, and you guys have stated that, so I'm really reiterating, that everybody is taking this, I know they take it serious, and I'm sure no one from another city would say, oh, we're taking, but they're not cleaning their aquarium side like we're cleaning our side, and you can't just clean half an aquarium. So I said that then, and I said it to the expert, and she just shook her head and said, you're right. So that concerns me. We got to get everybody on board, and we got to get the whole aquarium clean.
Absolutely. And I'm, I'm sure that comes up at the League of Cities, I would think, so stay on them.
Thank you, sir.
Thank you. Any other, any other cards? I mean, any other, council want to speak? I see none. Mr. City Manager?
Yes, sir. I've handed out a time-sensitive letter to the governor, and council, I'd like to read this for the record, you have it in front of you, but read it for the record. And the request is to have Mayor Johnson sign this, so we can get off to the mail tomorrow. Dated April 10th, 2018, to Governor Scott, the address, City of Titusville Support Letter for Low-Income Census Tracks Submission for the New Florida Opportunity Zone Program. Dear Governor Scott, on behalf of the City of Titusville, please accept this letter as evidence of the City of Titusville's support of the Opportunity Zone Program. It's our understanding that the governor's office will be allowed to submit 25% of eligible low-income census tracks as opportunity zones from Florida. This new tool will be very beneficial in providing tax incentives, including temporary deferral of capital gains taxes, when investors reinvest those gains in qualified opportunity funds. Understanding that the funds must in turn invest in low-income communities from designated census tracks called opportunity zones. We would like to submit Titusville's low-income census tracks for your consideration. We list seven tracks, and I'm not going to read all those numbers, but there are seven tracks that we've identified by census that qualify for an opportunity, opportunity zone. Thank you for your interest in Titusville, and we too share the goal to make Florida the global destination for jobs, so Floridians can continue to have the great opportunity to live their dreams. Please contact us should you have any questions about our support of the Florida Opportunity Zone Program. Sincerely, Mayor Walt Johnson. So just need council's approval to send this letter.
I need a motion to authorize me to sign this.
So move.
I have a motion, I have a second. Have a motion as second. Any further discussion? All those in favor say yes?
Yes.
All opposed, like sign, passes unanimously.
Yes, sir, I have no action items. I have a few information items for you, including the Welcome Center's monthly statistics, and if you'll note, we're still missing, out of the 50 states, Hawaii as a visit. So if anybody knows anybody from Hawaii, we would like for them to come visit our Welcome Center, so we can validate that in a year, we've gotten all of the cities or states in our country.
And South America, the South Tip, and Africa, the Cape of Good Hope, it's kind of amazing. You didn't hear what I said?
We have a card too, for City Manager's report.
Okay. Call the card, please. Stan Johnston, and regarding the City Manager's report, I think that it's very important that we consider the failure of our security surveillance system here in City Hall. I mean, if we're going to have an expensive security system, we should have it at least operational, so.
Point of order, I don't know how this is relevant to what the City Manager's report was.
I'm not sure I understand what you're.
I thought where he's put a card in for City Manager's report, and this has nothing to do with the City Manager's report. And we already heard this.
I don't think he was talking about this one, I think he was talking, you can explain it to her if you'd like. Okay.
Yeah, I don't.
What item are you talking about now?
He's talking about security surveillance on.
In other words. He mentioned it before.
Yeah. This is redundant, we already heard this.
All right, well. Have you already spoken on this item? Yes, you did, I remember you. I didn't say what happened. It, in other words, it wasn't working. I think that we should, we should have a. Take your three minutes, and try to stay on course. All right, okay, so, so what we happened is that someone was verbally assaulted and threatened here in City Hall, and then they checked and find out, well, hey, can we get a, can we get a video of it? And, and we got a report for the thing, it's, there's, it's nothing on the cameras, nothing's on the cameras. And so the, the equipment is not working. So my goodness, I think that's pretty serious. I mean, we, we spend a lot of money on this stuff, and then to have it just not working is, is really, that's, that's terrible. So in, in this case, is that, that someone was assaulted, verbally assaulted, yelled at, threatened, and, and it was right here, right here in City Hall, at about, on March the 27th. No recording whatsoever. The system, the system just doesn't work. So I think that it'd be incumbent upon the City Manager to report on it. Nothing is incumbent on him unless I say it is. Okay. I will ask you the question, has that situation been looked into?
Yes, sir, the security system in the city is working quite, quite well.
Okay. I was told it wasn't working. I was told by several people, it didn't work. I mean. You just heard it from the city. Sir, sit down. You're over.
Thank you.
Yeah, sure.
Thank you.
You're letting him waste more time for us.
Thank you, sir. And.
And thank you. And Mr. Johnston, I think this is in response to one of the comments that you made, which was alluding to verbal threats taking place in City Hall. And so I'd like to clarify what I believe that to mean, and if not verbal, at least what I would consider a threat. And I think for, to be abundantly forthcoming for council. As many of you know, as, in addition to being councilmen, I'm also. As many of you know, as, in addition to being a councilman, I'm also a teacher. And because I'm a teacher, one of the things that I have to maintain is character as defined and honesty as defined by the state of Florida through administrative code. I don't get to pick and choose when I exhibit that character. So even though I'm sitting here as a council member, my character still carries and follows with me outside of the chambers. Recently, through this period of time, but I would say specifically in this past week, I received emails from Mr. Johnson with the following statements.
Please, Johnston.
Oh, excuse me, Johnson, excuse me. Johnston, thank you. With the following statements inside. First off, please know the threshold that I have to maintain in order to keep my job, and actions unbecoming of this threshold threaten my job. Simply stated, I shall maintain honesty in all professional dealings. I would consider this a professional dealing as I'm exhibiting myself and the skills I maintain as a teacher, and I don't get to have off from that. So allegations that were made is verbatim, "It appears that the continued denial of city's illegal flooding of private property is an unethical cover-up of the city's misconduct." Second, in conclusion, "It appears that the council is unanimously cooperating with a dishonest cover-up of the city's mistakes and is complicit in the city's position of denial. Council's conduct is contrary to their oath of office, and they are not faithful to service the public." Third, "The continued illegal flooding of private property with continued code of silence and deception by city and current council members today. All three impugn my personal character, and there is a violation of my ethics that I have to maintain as a teacher. Please know that I'll be self-reporting, as I'm required to by the state, for potential flaws in my character that have now endangered my job." Courtesy of Mr. Johnson. As such, the threshold, as I read it and I still maintain, is that most courts require public officials to prove that defamatory statements were made with the person's actual knowledge of its falsehood, with reckless disregard of whether it was false or not. I think repeatedly, Mr. Johnson has been informed that his opinions are wrong, they have been substantiated by wrong, not only by this body, but multiple government agencies. As such, I think that it's not a matter of if he thinks he's wrong, he is wrong, but chooses to refuse to believe those facts. As such, any further comments that would defame me or my character, or impugn my character and jeopardize my career, I assure you that I'll be finding my personal civil liberties to be protected. So I just share, it is not a free shot up here. I'll be doing that as a private citizen, and personally, I would implore the rest of council to do the same. It's totally out of line. You can't do it, and now you are jeopardizing my work. So because of that liability, sir, any further comments, I'll be turning it over to my lawyer. Thank you.
You also have the city man, or city attorney's report, sir?
Oh, I'm sorry. City Attorney, do you have a report?
It's in the agenda.
Yeah.
If you pass these down. Mayor and counsel, I wrote a memorandum, which is being passed out. I previously provided that to you by email, which was written in response to your request for information regarding procedures associated with public comment at council meetings. So I've prepared the memorandum. I'd like to advise you, prior to 2013, the law was that the public had the right to attend public meetings. That was part of the Sunshine Law, Public Meetings Law. In 2013, there was a change to the statute, in particular, section 286.0114. The first page of the memo, I've cited the applicable portions of that statute. It was amended to state that members of the public shall be given a reasonable opportunity to be heard on a proposition before a board or commission. The opportunity to be heard need not occur at the same meeting at which you take official action, but must occur within reasonable proximity in the time you take the vote. Statute also provides that this section does not prohibit a board or commission from maintaining orderly conduct or proper decorum in your public meetings. So the one changed, a significant change that was made is the public not only has the right to attend, but the right to speak on propositions before you. On the next page, you'll see subsection three of that section. The requirement in subsection two, which is the requirement to be heard on a proposition, does not apply to official acts involving no more than a ministerial act, including but not limited to approval of minutes and ceremonial proclamations. Just like to point out that previous council adopted Resolution 24, 2013, on October 8th, 2013, which actually incorporated the statutory provision allowing for public comment. I've included a copy of the resolution as an attachment. And that particular resolution, which adopted the comment, also provides that public comment does not extend to approval of minutes. So your current resolution adopted by you, and this is what the mayor was referencing earlier, is you do have a resolution that allows public comment on propositions before you, but also exempts approval of minutes and ceremonial proclamations. Even though, you know, public comment is encouraged and it's required by the statute, also, as we stated, allows you to maintain proper decorum. And while the ability to make public comment is protected not only by the First Amendment and by Florida law, the courts have found there is a significant governmental interest in conducting orderly, efficient meetings of public bodies. And as a limited public forum, a city council meeting is not open for endless public commentary speech, but instead is simply a limited platform to discuss the topic at hand because you are here to do city business. The City Council Chambers is established as a limited public forum for the purpose of conducting city business in accordance with the council agenda, and the council is not required to allow persons to engage in every type of speech. While council may not censor speech about an authorized topic based upon the point of view expressed by the speaker, it has broad discretion to preserve the meeting under its control for the use to which it was dedicated. However, any restrictions imposed by council must not discriminate against speech on the basis of viewpoint, and the restriction must be reasonable and not in an effort to suppress speech merely because a council member is opposed to a speaker's view. Following the 11th Circuit Court rulings in Jones versus Hayman and Roe versus City of Cocoa, the Middle District of Florida Court in Jackie Brown versus City of Jacksonville found that a city council rule which prohibits any person from making personal and pertinent or slanderous remarks or becoming boisterous at the council meeting is designed to regulate orderly and efficient public meetings, limited to a specific subject matter germane to an agenda at hand, and this will allow others the opportunity to speak, and that rule is constitutional. In summary, members of the public are entitled to speak on propositions to be considered by council, other than the exemptions as stated, approval of minutes, ceremonial proclamations. However, courts have found that there is a significant governmental interest in conducting orderly, efficient meetings of public bodies. The mayor has ultimate authority to maintain order and keep debate on the topic at hand. "To wit," and this is a quote from Jones versus Hayman, "to permit repetitious questions and arguments not related to an agenda topic would be to deny the presiding officer the authority to regulate irrelevant debate of a public meeting and would cause such meetings to drag on interminably and deny others the opportunity to voice their opinions." In closing, "The city council may consider amending your rules of procedure on debate and to address decorum." And so I've offered this memorandum to you for your consideration.
I read that, sir. Your, or you sent it to us, and it's my intention to do exactly what that says. Thank you. Anything else, sir?
We have one card on this item.
Call the card.
Stan Johnston.
Stan Johnston, 860 Pointset Avenue. And Richard was kind enough to send me that letter at my request. Appreciate that. And so I have a, we have a problem here. Is the problem is, is that you don't like my talking and you don't like my reputation. Well, you see, the problem is a different way. If you look at it this way, is that, I see it, is that I do not like you, counsel, not talking to me. I'm talking at council meetings because you don't talk to me. City manager has never met with me, has never talked with me. Repeated attempts. We have stocks of, you know, just like Walt showed. He said seven or eight years? That wasn't seven or eight years. That was less than six years. If you talk about the time that I lost my son, it's less than five years. So I've sent all these things, and nobody responds. And just, we just saw what Matt Behringer did. Instead of talking to me, I sent it to him and asked him to talk with me, to meet with him about these things, review and comment, rather than, he comes in public and talks to it, but he won't talk to me in private. He won't do it. He won't do it. So he comes out and he won't let me come and speak about what I, what he just said. So what we have is a problem, is that I will continue to talk, just as I have, as long as you won't talk to me, as long as City Manager will not communicate with me. And Mr. Johnson just gave an example. He says, when he's preparing for a meeting, he goes to city staff, he goes to, but I can't do it. I can't do it. In fact, is I can't even go to council. I can't get counsel. Even Dan Diesel has talked to me. Oh, he did, he did one time, but he still hasn't given me an answer. Jo Lynn, she won't, she won't, she'll communicate with me a little bit, but she won't answer the questions. So understand, is I will continue as I have been doing, just as it is, because you refuse to talk with me. You refuse to meet with me. So this is my last recourse. This is a consequence of what you are doing. I'm not doing it, you're doing it. And if, for example, if you go into your, your own statutes, is you're supposed to have something and so that you have, have justice and order and so forth like this. I don't consider this justice and fairness on my part when I'm trying to solve a problem and you, and I have a code of silence. My understanding is what people are doing is, is they go, council members, talk to Mr. Larisse, and he says, "Don't respond to Mr. Johnson." That's what I'm getting. He talks to you that way, and so what we have is, it appears to me, is, is the way I look at it, is he's a puppet master and you're on his strings. So you want to do it that way? That's fine, but I will be continuing, just as I have been. And that's the way it's going to be, I guess, because you want to do it that way. You're through, sir. Thank you. Sit down, please, or leave, whatever you'd like. But you distort facts like nobody I have ever seen. You say, "I've never talked to you." I had a meeting with you and the city manager and the chief of police a week and a half ago.
One time.
You said never. I just did it two weeks ago, maybe a week and a half ago.
Okay. Oh, there's one exception, we had, I don't...
I spoke to you many, many times during the years from 2012 to 2018.
I don't think so.
Well, you never think so. That's the problem. Sir, you will be required to keep order in this chamber when you come in. Anyone else have anything? I see somebody's got their light on there. Member Stokel?
Yeah, I just wanted to reiterate what you just said, just for the record and anybody that's watching. I've met with Mr. Johnson as well, and it pains me to think of how much time staff has spent meeting with you. And based off our meeting and time, I've come quickly to the conclusion that if you don't agree, you're just going to keep going on it. So I just want to clarify that for anyone listening. That's all.
Member Diesel?
And Mr. Johnson, Johnston, you know we met. And what I've determined after your comment that, that I haven't given you an answer, you don't want my answer, you just want me to go with whatever you say. And that's disappointing. When I met with you, I thought we might get somewhere, we might really discuss something. But clearly, you just want me to say what you want me to say. That's not going to happen.
Thank you. Thank you, sir. Our tasks are completed. I call this meeting adjourned.